Call to order the Monday, February 23 meeting of the Common Council. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alder Person Diaz.
Here.
Alder Person Doyle.
Here.
Alder Person Linder.
Here.
Alder Person McGilvery.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
And Alder Person Years.
Here.
We have everyone here. Thank you for that. We will move along on the agenda. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Anyone from the public? I'm not seeing any, so we will move forward. Next is the minutes from the February 9 meeting of the Common Council, and those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, I just have two things tonight. One is, I want to thank the Police Department for last week, Monday, we had that emergency government training. Five members of the Common Council, plus Bill and myself, attended. It was very good training. I think it was about two and a half hours, and after that, we had the opportunities to tour one of the vehicles that the city of Pittsburgh has, and also Dane County. So, the instructor was very good. I think we all learned a lot, and just, again, want to compliment the Police Department for putting that training on. A second thing I wanted to mention, everyone should have received late last week on the council, received an email from Adam that he had forwarded on my behalf, and that is in regards to a meeting this coming Thursday morning in this room. Madison Smart Growth has been an organization for years, many years, and really up to this point, they've only been monitoring what's going on in the city of Madison. I was contacted, and they indicated that they want to start meeting and looking at some of the areas, the cities and villages that are close to Madison, and meeting with them. So, they threw out the opportunity and wanted to know if we would be the first city outside of the city of Madison. So, we have invited the Common Council, the Verona Plan Commission, and also the Executive Board of the Verona Chamber, plus Carol Curtis. So, if you can make it, it starts, I'm trying to think, it's seven forty-five, and we will be done by nine o'clock. And it's really, it's just meant to be an exchange of information on economic development issues that we, you know, face here, and ideas, and potential things happening in the city of Verona, and then some comments from the Madison Smart Growth members itself. As of Thursday, last Thursday, I think they had about fifteen people RSVP'd, and they were hoping for a few more. So, it should be a good meeting. If you can make it, great. If not, we understand. If you can make it for part of the meeting and have to leave, that's fine, too. Just wanted to make sure that you were invited to that. That concludes my report for this evening. We will move then to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. Earlier this evening, the Madison Plan Commission considered the city of Verona's North Neighborhood Plan. This item had been referred back to the Madison Plan Commission following some changes to the language regarding mass transit that had been recommended by the Verona Plan Commission and in the version approved by the Verona City Council. Earlier this evening, when the Madison Plan Commission considered the North Neighborhood Plan, they did not take any additional action on that. Our understanding is that this item will go to the Madison City Council for potential action on Tuesday, March 3. And with no additional recommendation coming from the Madison Plan Commission, it would be coming with the original recommendation, which was for the original plan language before the modifications for Verona. We'll be following up, both with city of Madison staff as well as city legal counsel, the implications of the two different versions of the plan prior to that meeting, and staff will be attending the Madison City Council meeting next Tuesday as well. Coming up this week, there's going to be a special meeting for Dane County Cities and Villages that will be held on the 25th at 5:30 PM in the city of Monona. The topic is going to be the DaneCom radio system. County officials will be present and providing an update on the status of the DaneCom system, and the main focus of the meeting, or one of the main focuses, will be to discuss two different options for municipalities of either going forward with the DaneCom system as built this summer, or doing, and then following up with an enhancement to that system in the summer of 2016, or waiting and implementing the entire system in summer of 2016. At this meeting, I'm anticipating that we'll get additional information, be able to ask questions of the county, and then that's an item that likely cities and villages will be asked to take a position on, potentially at the regular meeting that'll be coming up on March 11. And then finally, wanted to announce that the Verona Senior Center is going to be starting a new program called their Club 108 Cafe. This is a form of a memory cafe, which is targeted towards independent seniors that are in early stages of memory concerns, memory loss issues, and for caregivers of those individuals. There'll be additional information coming out in the city's electronic newsletter, as well as available through the Senior Center and the Senior Center website. They are planning on starting that program in March, so stay tuned for more information. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions this evening for Mr. Burns? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bill. Next, we'll have the Engineers' Report. Mr. Gunlock.
Thank you. I have no formal report this evening. We'll be discussing the, or last week's bid opening further down the agenda. If anybody has any questions on Public Works, I'd be happy to try to answer them, otherwise.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Again, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We'll move on then to Committee Reports. We'll begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $1,526,852.80.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery.
Thank you. In the way of explanation, four of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands for our debt payment, annual debt payment for our state trust fund loans. That amount is $141,565.50. Second, to Cornerstone Construction for masonry on the fire and EMS station, $89,300. Third, to E&amp;A Enterprises, Inc., for drywall on the fire and EMS station, $111,910. And finally, to TNB Supply Company, LLC, for a material purchase for the fire and EMS station, $388,960.45.
Are there any questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff on the approval of the bills? I'm not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $1,526,852.80. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Also, just of note for people who would be expecting a refund check, this month's bills do include all those refund checks that would be going out to people who have overpaid on their taxes for the 2014 year.
Which is, if I might add, is a common occurrence when people escrow for, when they escrow for their property taxes, and then the taxes went down for most people, as it did in the tax year for the payment of the 2014 taxes. And I know we had a number of calls whether or not, you know, if, I had one person call me and ask me personally if I could sign off on their check so they could, you know, because it was for more than what it was, and I said, you know, we can't do that. So, this is, again, it's an occurrence when property taxes are lower than what's anticipated. So, if you look at the payment of bills, there's a lot of them in there. It also reminds me that there were a number of people that I talked to this year that on their tax bills that they were not signed up for lottery tax credit, and if you've been living in your home for over twelve months, then you should take a look at your property tax bill, because if you aren't getting a credit for that, you're missing out on that not only one year, but you're missing out on that every year. So, it is the property owner's responsibility to make sure that you're getting that credit, and you can actually do it for, when you pay your taxes, you could do it for that year, and you could do it retroactive to the prior year. The first year, for the current year's taxes, you can do that through the city. If you're going retroactive for the prior year, you have to do that through the Department of Revenue, but it's about a hundred and thirty-some dollars it was this year. So, if, take a look at your property tax bill. If you are not, if you don't see the lottery tax credit on there, please be sure to sign up. Otherwise, you're missing out on that credit that every taxpayer is eligible for. Mr. Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you brought up the tax refund for escrow checks. Is it possible for the Finance Committee to look at possibly paying that sooner in 2016?
Well, I can let Bill respond, but I think that, I think the response is this, is that some people make their installment on January 31st, which they're allowed to do, rather than December 31st. So, we really need to, I'm speaking on behalf of the staff here, I should let Bill speak, or maybe Kami. That's why they have to wait until after the January 31st date, and then reconcile everything and prepare the, and process the checks. But Bill, maybe you want to respond to?
Yeah, I just add a couple of things to that. When we do, you receive checks that are for more than the amount due, we do want to have a period of time to ensure that all payments that are posted on a property have time to clear. We also normally have waited until after we do our tax settlement with Dane County and have all of our records up to date and complete and matching the county's records, and that was just completed, which is why the timeframe is being looked at right now for issuing the refunds.
Go ahead, Mr. Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fortunately did not have that issue, but if I were in that situation, and I do understand the checks need to clear, that makes a lot of sense to me, and there needs to be a waiting period after, for the checks to properly clear. But for me, it's still my money, and if you're sitting on it because of some procedural reason, that does not make sense to me. If you're waiting to clear, you know, balance the books with Dane County and all that, that has nothing to do with me and my money. So, I really want, I'm asking city staff to reconsider that policy and come up with a more equitable policy.
Okay. And the second thing, and I would add, and I assume other mortgage companies are like mine, where in the early part of the year, then they will reevaluate what the prior year taxes were. So, I know they'll do that on mine. So, the amount that I would escrow for the next year will be less than what it was the prior year because the taxes had gone down. But in the event where there'd be another reduction in taxes, we'd be at the same position where we were this year, where there would be refund checks. Yeah. Mr. Linder?
Maybe one thing to add for that is, I believe you can, if you know what your taxes are, you can have them cut a new check, send them the old check, your bank. They'll cut your check for the right amount, so you don't have to wait any time for it, because that's actually what I did.
And again, that's, it depends on the mortgage company. They don't all handle it the same way. Okay, sorry about that. Mr. McGilvery?
Alda.
That's right. You only had one thing tonight. Thank you. We'll move then to Public Works Sort and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for the 2015 Street Rehabilitation Project.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Touche?
Four sealed bids were received for this project. The low bid, the low base bid was submitted by Hammersley Stone Company Incorporated in Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, in the amount of $1,190,450.50. The Hammersley Stone Company has performed work in an acceptable manner in the past. Staff recommends awarding of the contract to Hammersley Stone Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,190,450.50. Please note that this is 4.8% below our estimated amount this year.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Are there any questions for the Public Works Committee or for city staff or engineer? Seeing none, the motion before you is to award the contract for the 2015 Street Rehabilitation Project with Hammersley Stone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Under Item 9B2, I would like to make a motion to approve change order number five for the Liberty Park Phase 1 Construction Project.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Touche?
The reason for this change order is that after the utility companies installed the facilities, there was additional area that required restoration. The contractor was directed to restore these areas at additional compensation to place the asphalt, to place the asphalt surface, paving rings, and lids needed to be installed. The original contract price did not include these rings. Additional pavement markings over what was in the original bid needed to be installed accounting for three additional words, three additional words, and nine additional arrows. The total amount of this change order was $8,875.
Again, you've heard the explanation, the backup for the motion. Are there questions or comments from the City Council? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve change order number five for Liberty Park Phase 1 Construction Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery? Excuse me, Mr. Touche?
Under Item 9B3, I would like to make a motion to approve change order number six for the Liberty Park Phase 1 Construction Project.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, excuse me, keep thinking of prior. Motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
This is an administrative change order to reconcile as-bid quantities and costs with the constructed quantities and costs associated with the Liberty Business Park Phase 1 Project. The result of the change order is in addition to the contract in the amount of $47,864.34. This will bring the total contract price with all the approved change orders to $1,124,425.59. This will cost the, this will close the project out. Please note that the extra amounts, the majority of the additional costs come from laterals, six-inch water laterals that were added and installed. This is, the additions were to avoid future tearing up of the street to have to tie into the water mains in Liberty Business Park, and it also involves undercutting unstable soils.
Thank you, Mr. Touche, for the explanation. Are there questions from the Common Council? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve change order number six for Liberty Park Phase 1 Construction Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Under Item 9B4, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-007, authorizing city administrator to resolve nonbodily injury liability claims against the city.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
When the cities, when the city of Verona became a member of the Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, CVMIC, in 2013, Verona took a self-insured retention of $25,000 per claim for general liability claims with an annual aggregate of $100,000. Several CVMIC members have established a threshold that allows for claims under a certain amount to be resolved administratively. This can allow for a quicker response to smaller claims where liability is clear. Today, the Public Works Committee reviewed this resolution to authorize the city administrator to resolve nonbodily injury claims of up to $10,000 upon review by the administrator and at least one other appropriate staff person, and receiving a recommendation from the city's insurance carrier. Claims over $10,000 or that involve bodily injury would require action by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments for the committee or for the staff? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that this change will do two things. I think it'll make the process faster, which is good for anyone who has a claim against the city, and two, I think it'll make the process seem a little bit more fair, as opposed to kicking it to Public Works. I think this is kind of the, insurance claims should be handled by staff, because they're the experts, and that's a better way of doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other questions or comments?
Who seconded it?
Seconded, it was by Mr. Diaz.
Oh, was it?
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution R-15-007, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and that has been approved. Mr. Touche, anything
else from Public Works?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Gunlock for sticking around. I was going to call him out for some explanation of some of these items, but I think I got it right this time, so that would be all.
Thank you. Next, Personnel Committee. Ms. Doyle, please.
I would like to make a motion under Item 9C1, let's see here, yep, 9C1, to the Resolution R-15-008, to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Verona and the International Association of Firefighters Local 311 for 2015 and 2016.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Ms. Doyle?
By way of explanation, the city of Verona and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 311, have reached a tentative agreement, well, a collective bargaining agreement for 2015 and 2016. As per later in the explanation here, that has actually been ratified as of today by the union, if that's correct, Mr. Burns. So, we have an approved negotiated terms by the union. The city has been operating under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated with the Verona Fire District as a result of the Dane County Circuit Court Decision and Settlement Agreement with Local 311. So, this collective bargaining agreement covers four full-time fire employees, two lieutenants, and two firefighters, and the agreement will become effective now since it's already been ratified by the union, once it's approved, if it's approved by the city council this evening. So, the Personnel Committee did meet prior to this Common Council meeting earlier this evening and did recommend approval to the council. We can go into closed session if there's any specific questions regarding the finance or further negotiation of the actual contract, but if there's any clarification with the terms as included in the packet, we can discuss those in open session. Mr. Burns, I don't know if you'd like to provide any additional information to the council?
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple highlights of the agreement. As Ms. Doyle had indicated, this was the first contract that the city negotiated directly with the local 311 unit, the previous one being negotiated by the fire district. So, there were several changes in the agreement to follow the structure and the wording of city agreements and try to make it more consistent with other city agreements. A couple of the key items included in the contract, it includes a lump sum payment for wages in 2014. Since the fire district agreement went through 2013, this agreement would be effective for 15 and 16, but it does include that lump sum payment for 2014. It also establishes a pay structure with steps for the firefighter inspector positions, and then a rate for the lieutenant position. It includes employee contributions towards the Wisconsin Retirement System, which is consistent with what we have for other city employees. That was negotiated as part of this agreement. The agreement provides for dental insurance coverage for the fire employees, which again would be consistent with the dental insurance provided to other city employees. And then there's also several items addressed related to vacation structure, work schedules. The agreement includes language that allows for employees to move to a 24-hour shift schedule, which is planned for the lieutenant positions later this year following completion of the fire station, and then several adjustments, items such as personal leave, vacation, and sick leave related to changes in schedules and hours worked. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the agreement.
I would just make a comment. I was at the Personnel Committee as well, and it was unanimous recommendation that came out of the Personnel Committee, and as Ms. Doyle indicated, the Firefighters Union has ratified the agreement as of today. So, they, I guess the point that I wanted to make is, if we were to make any changes this evening, anything that we would revise would need to go back to the firefighters. So, I know the Personnel Committee was unanimous in their recommendation, and my support is behind that as well. Mr. Years, please.
I just wanted to state that I think the city reached a very fair agreement with the union that not only achieves the goals of the city, but also further reconciles some of the issues left over from the Verona Fire District agreement, kind of much of what Bill said, but I fully support the agreement, and I think we've reached a very fair deal.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I will call the motion then. All those in favor of Resolution R-15-008, approving a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Verona and the International Association of Firefighters Local 311 for years 2015 and 2016, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and we have a contract. I would just say I want to really commend Mr. Burns and Fire Chief Giver, and our legal counsel, Brian Kleymeyer, for working out the agreement, and also thanks Personnel Committee for working through the process as well. So, we have a union contract. So, with that, we are moving to old business. We have first confirming the acquisition of property at 101 North Main Street. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. At the February 9 council meeting, there was discussion of purchasing the property at 101 North Main Street, the property located at the northeast corner of Main and Verona Avenue. Council had provided authorization to make an offer to purchase the property, and that offer has been accepted, and a tentative closing has been scheduled for March 5. And part of preparing for the closing, it's the recommendation from the city attorney that the Common Council take action in open session to affirm the purchase of the property and basically provide that on record on the minutes, and that's something that typically would be looked for by a title company as they're gathering the information to show evidence of the authorization to proceed with the closing. So, this would basically just be an item confirming that, and the recommended wording from the motion from the city attorney is included in the Administrator's memo.
There is no motion before us at this time, and really before we debate, there should be a motion. Mr. Years, please.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm and approve the city of Verona's acquisition of the property located at 101 North Main Street for the purchase price of $150,000, and pursuant to other terms and conditions of the offer negotiated by the city of Verona's staff and sellers.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Years, you are the author of the motion. Anything that you want to add? I'll give you first opportunity.
No, I think this is a great move on the city's part, especially as we're trying to revitalize the downtown, and I'm all for it.
Thank you. Questions, comments from Alders? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The purpose of this purchase, is it to save that structure? It is probably the only and last historical building in our downtown.
Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
That has not been determined at this time. The city, purchasing that property means that that would be under the city's control. The city would have the option of what to do with that property. Certainly, having it under our control gives us that ability to preserve it if we are able to do that, but this action to acquire it would not determine what the ultimate use of the property is. I should add that part of the rationale for looking at purchasing this property is that the city anticipates that it would need additional right-of-way at this intersection in the future, and by acquiring this property at this time, we're able to secure that right-of-way as well as the additional land in the building that's available on the property.
Mr. Steiner?
Follow-up question. If we're purchasing this to have the right to buy some land to improve that intersection, why are we spending money to buy the building, then?
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, with this purchase that gives the city both the additional area that we would need for right-of-way, as well as control over that property for potential use of that property for future redevelopment. So, basically, there, you would say there are two purposes here of looking at this property, the right-of-way, as well as having that for potential reuse or redevelopment of the property in the future.
Go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Burns, do we have someone that's interested in that building already, that we're doing this now?
Mr. Burns?
We are aware of some different businesses that are looking at that property and have interest for that. Those discussions are ongoing. Those discussions are ongoing. We don't have an agreement for that at this point, but we do know of interest, and we'll continue to pursue those leads if we proceed with the purchase of this property.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Diaz, and then Mr. Years.
Yeah, I was first.
I'm sorry, okay, Mr. Years?
Thank you. Just to, to Mr. Steiner's point about the, the building being a beautiful and historic building, which I very much agree with Mr. Steiner on that. And that's another reason why I'm for the city purchasing this building, is it does give the city the, as Mr. Burns said, it gives the, the city the authority to determine the fate of that building. And if it's possible, I would love to see that building saved, and I, I think that this gives us the option to do that. And if we didn't buy the building, I think that would be a lot less, the, the opportunity to save the building would be a lot less.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. How much was the building initially appraised for?
Mr. Burns?
The assessed value of the property is over 300,000. I don't have the exact number, but the purchase price is significantly below the assessed value.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I think that, that part of the reason we're moving on this is because we need the property, some of the property for the right-of-way, and we're getting a really, really good deal on it. And, and if we waited, we might end up paying just as much and get less. So, this is, this is why it's moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder?
Where, where in the budget does the money come for this?
Mr. Burns?
The, the funding for this would come from the downtown Tiff District, Tiff District Number Four.
Okay. That'll come to the Finance Committee later, then, to do that, or?
Mr. Burns?
Actually, we, we have dollars budgeted within the Tiff District for, for 2015. So, this would be using a portion of those funds that were budgeted in 2015. Council action would be all that's needed to proceed with purchasing the property at this point.
If this motion were approved tonight, this would be the final action necessary for Mr. Burns to continue to finalize the, the agreement. Other questions or comments? I know this is something we had talked about. This is another potential piece in the puzzle for what we're looking to do in the downtown area. Mr. McIlvery?
Just for historical sake and Jack's question about where the money comes from, I think from about 2012, maybe 2011 on, we have discussed having that, a, a set of money set aside for the Tiff District to purchase property or make improvements to the, in the Tiff District. So, this has been an ongoing thing that we've been doing for at, at least three, maybe four years, if my memory serves me correct. We haven't, to this point, done it, but the, the money's been there and been available.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
I'd just like to say that I was excited to see this opportunity come forward and glad that the, the city has been able to pursue this option as it does allow us to have some more influence and an opportunity to save the historic building as well as achieving more in our downtown going forward.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? I'm not seeing any. The motion before you is to confirm the acquisition of the property at 101 North Main Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Steiner voting no. So, that passes. We are now on Agenda Item Number 11, which is new business, and we have approval of operator licenses. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
There is one operator license for approval this evening from Dana Schlotman at the draft house.
What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Riki. Were there any, were there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the operator's license approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are on to announcements. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a little background, Verona Area Needs Network is leaving our old library on East Harriet. It has came to agreement to rent a building out at Beadger Prairie on the east side of town from the county. That building needs refrigeration and a little bit of construction before they can move in there and serve the people who use this type of facility. This Sunday, March 1, they start their fundraising. There will be a pancake breakfast at the St. Andrew Church Parish Center, starting at 8:30 a.m. and going till 10:30 a.m. And all proceeds from this pancake breakfast will benefit VEAN, Verona Area Needs Network. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other announcements this evening? I'm not seeing any. With no other business before us, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.